To enlist in the Army and actually in about thirty minutes, he will be pulling into the Fort Sill gates for the very first time.
Oh, well, he's got an interesting night ahead for him, so.
He does have an interesting night ahead of him.
We'll catch up on that. We haven't seen one another since all this, but okay.
Yes, sir. But he is a newly enlisted member of the US Army.
This is your Zoom host, John. It looks like we have nine attendees viewing the meeting. Now ten.
All right, Brenda, are you ready to go?
Yes.
All righty. Well, I saw that it is four thirty, so we will call the order. The August tenth, twenty twenty, City of Bella Vista Planning Commission meeting. Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Daniel Ellis.
Here.
Doug Farner.
Here.
Don Robinson.
Here.
JB Portello.
Here.
Gail Clessen.
Here.
Chad Knoll.
Here.
Shaki Almadun. I don't, oh, Shaki's connecting right now. His audio is connecting.
Hey, Dan.
Oh, yeah, we're calling roll right now. Shaki waiting on you, bud.
Oh, you're all right. I can't hear. That's why I'm calling. See, I can hear. I can hear you, I guess. Yes, sir.
Proceed, Brenda.
Shaki Almadun.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Everyone's.
All right. Good deal. We still we have a quorum. We have our regular meeting minutes from May eleventh, twenty twenty.
I make a motion minutes be approved as submitted.
A motion for Farner?
Second.
I think that was a second from Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Imposed? All right, meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have our public input session. This will be an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on either items A or B, which is a waiver in a large scale, or any other thing that you would like to address the planning commission on. The rezone that's scheduled for a little bit later, we will do a public hearing for that meeting. So at this time, we will open the floor to the public. If you would like to speak to the planning commission, please signify by raising your virtual hand on Zoom or star nine, I believe it is, on your phone.
Yes, this is your Zoom host, John. We have Jane Powell that would like to address the commission.
Absolutely. Jane, if you would state your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the planning.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry. I didn't understand. Were y'all not doing the rezoning for the property on Chelsea Road today?
Yes, we're taking that up later this evening, and then we will do a public hearing. We get to that item.
Okay, so can I go ahead and speak on that, Adam, or should I wait till later?
You should wait till later.
Okay, sir, then I will do that. I will wait till later.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to address the planning commission? All righty, seeing none, we will close the public input session and move right into new business. We have waiver two zero two zero dash three five two three three, a request to waive the timing requirements for an associated large-scale development. As stipulated in one zero seven dash one six five, I will say that on items C and B, I will abstain from the conversation and the voting. So with that, Mr. Lynn.
Okay, that sounds good. And just a kind of housekeeping comment here. If you are not speaking and you're able to mute your mic, that'll help just to kind of keep the keep the volume down. So, okay. The subject parcels here are highlighted on the map that you see on the screen right now. The address here is one oh three Veterans Way. This is down. You can see with the colors on this plan here, the different zoning districts which are within the city of Bella Vista, and then the parcels that are look like forested areas and just general other landscape features. Those are outside of the city limits. They may be either unincorporated Benton County or city of Bentonville. So you can see here in the middle of the drawing, though, how we have a P one zoning district and a C four zoning district. Those are the two subject parcels. The request here is to expand the existing memorial on the western parcel into the eastern parcel. This would include also the the subject waiver request that's noted, in which they're seeking to have additional time to pull the necessary building permits associated with this, and then also to proceed forward with their current civil set and topographic property survey that they provided in lieu of providing a new boundary survey, this this topo survey being based off of all the recent survey data available. Staff is recommending approval and development plans. Here, some can add it on this project. One, just providing the addressing their remaining outstanding comments on the project, obtaining a floodplain development permit prior to construction, providing verification of a Cooper easement release, as is typical in most locations in Bella Vista, where we have two lots that are adjacent to each other, and there's a request to construct something across them. If there is a platted easement that is in the favor of Cooper, then this is the appropriate mechanism to be able, one of the appropriate mechanisms needed to to do that across the property line, and then a related a related for the city of Belvista, which is highlighted there. You can see here on the land use map and plan where this fits within this medium density part of the city, again, in the middle of the map and near the southern southern part of this part of the city. Moving on to the staff analysis on the LSD portion. Regarding the completeness of the application, we are still needing to see the ADA parking detail on the site plans. Otherwise, this is the other items have largely been addressed, and you can see the applicant's response letter in the in the packet. I noted here that they are using a stamped topographic survey based off of a plat of twenty two thousand three seven five two, and that this is sufficient for the project as the requested improvements are well within the site boundaries within an existing sidewalk network that the commission can see on the civil plans. And other than these, the subject waiver requests, there are no there are no apparent violations associated with this with this request. Okay? Regarding traffic, this this expansion of this existing memorial does not appear to contribute to any traffic concerns related to the general and current activity of this contextual area. As noted in the staff report and seen on the exhibits, the parking area used for this is 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 used also currently for the memorial is also used for this recreation area to the south. Regarding availability of utilities, we did receive a comment from Carroll Electric, who provides service to the area, and their comment is in the packet, but essentially, they're not concerned with the additional load from this expansion onto their onto their network. Onto drainage comments. The grading plan does depict a berm to be implemented, and it does have adequate room for any necessary BMPs that would be established in concert with that. We've already noted the applicability of the floodplain development permit, and they have submitted the data for that. And they have also since the work session submitted a drainage report, which is summarized in the conclusion of this of this staff report. There are no other related planning actions required for this to proceed. Number six. Okay? This is the analysis on the waiver aspect of of this project and as referenced on the agenda. We spoke to the timing items at the last meeting, that being the additional time being requested for the building permits. So I'm not going to focus on that at this time, but this is available on the record, this this more detailed analysis on the screen right now and also on the published packet. Just speaking a little bit more to the survey request, this number one item, are there special circumstances or conditions affecting the land involved such that strict application of the provision of these regulations would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land? Staff analyze that this meets that the current survey set based off of this plat provides all the effective easements and adequate data to communicate the proposal through this current civil set. Further, that the development plans, or excuse me, to additionally provide the full boundary survey at this time would delay the project and could be an insurmountable burden for this this nonprofit. And finally, would this waiver request be be considered a detriment to the public health, safety, or welfare on this item? This waiver in no in no way affects that that criterion. And in no way would these waiver requests affect future subdivision or development activities of surrounding properties. Okay? Okay, so this really just provides a nuts and bolts summary of the staff report that we have spoken to previously, and all in red are updates since what was communicated at the work session. So you can see the progress that the applicant has has made. I've made note here, the ADA note in number one, otherwise pending the waiver decision associated with this application, all other items are have been addressed with the item number one. Number two, the stamp drainage letter. This has been provided to be confirmed by staff engineer. They've addressed the Carroll Electric comment that was in regards to moving the center line of a few trees to prevent conflict with the overhead power line. They've addressed these engineering items as well as as noted here below in in red. And so with that, we can come to the conclusion of the staff report, and just as a reminder, the commission will consider this tonight through both the the waiver twenty twenty dash thirty five two three three, and then consider the LSD.
Are there any questions for staff and the commissioners? I see the applicant is on the call also. Would you like to add anything to the staff report?
No, sir. We everything looks to be in order, and Mr. Lynn and I have spoken about this, and I think we are in good shape. I don't have anything further to add.
Okay, thank you. We'll need to we'll need to take these items one at a time. For the first item will be waiver twenty twenty dash three five two three three.
I make a motion. We approve the waiver.
A motion from Farner?
I'll second that.
Got a second from Noel. Brenda, would you call the roll?
Doug Farner.
Yes.
Don Robinson.
Yes.
JB Portello.
Yes.
Shaki Almadun.
Yes, sorry.
Gail Clessen.
Yes.
Chad Knoll.
Yes.
Daniel Ellis.
I'm staying. I think that's six and six and one or whatever.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, we have the LSD twenty twenty dash three four nine five zero.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, the conditions.
I second.
Got a second from Portello. Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Doug Farner.
Yes.
Don Robinson.
Yes.
JB Portello.
Yes.
Shaki Almadun.
Yes, ma'am.
Gail Clessen.
Yes.
Chad Knoll.
Yes.
Daniel Ellis.
I'm staying. All right, I believe that the waiver and the large scale have been approved. Thank you, sir.
I thank you for your time and appreciate all the help from staff. Y'all have a good evening.
All right, moving on, we have rezone twenty twenty dash three four eight five eight. A request to rezone parfa number one six dash two four six eight eight dash zero zero two on Chelsea Road from R one to C two. I know that we have several people from the public that have called in and are listening also. What will happen is we will we will take a staff report, and the commissioner, if it's opportunity to ask questions of the staff, then we will allow the applicant to make some comments, and we will ask questions of the applicant. Once that's done, then we will open the floor to the public, and each one of you that wishes to may address the planning commission. We do ask that you give us your name and your address, and we will allow you three minutes to address the planning commission. So with that, if we can get a staff report, please.
Daniel, can I say something first before we get the staff report?
If you would like to give some advice to the planning commission, Mr. Kelly, absolutely.
Well, not only for the commission, but for all those who are interested. I think you all know this, but just again, for the sake of everyone who's interested, the planning commission in this circumstance, any rezoning makes a recommendation. The planning commission is not the ultimate decision maker. Whether the planning commission decides to recommend an approval or denial, that that issue would eventually end up in front of the city council and the mayor for their legislative determination as to whether or not a property should be rezoned. Now, one of the common questions that everyone has is, well, how do you decide whether you should rezon something? And so I, in the past, and I know the the commission has gotten this in the past, I I hope that as some of you have joined us on a more on a more recent basis, you've seen it. I sent it out again relatively recently, but a memo to you about what you can consider when it comes to rezoning a piece of property. And I want to, I think it would be beneficial for everyone to kind of hear those so they can hear their comments both for and against toward the factors that would that the city can in fact consider. And so obviously, when the city adopts any zoning or development plan according to state law, it does so, as the as the statute says, in order to promote, in accordance with present and future needs, safety morals or order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare of the citizens. And then by doing so, you adopt plans which can provide, among other things, for efficiency and economy in the process of development, the appropriate and best use of land, convenience of traffic and circulation of people and goods, safety from fire and other dangers, adequate light and air in the use and occupancy of buildings, healthful and convenient distribution of population, good civic design and arrangement, adequate public facilities and utilities, wise and efficient expenditure of funds. And of course, the city considers all those things when it develops a land use plan and develops a zoning order. Now, in addition to that, the Arkansas courts, and by that I mean particularly the Arkansas Supreme Court, has given the go-ahead to a certain number of considerations which may be made by a planning commission or a city council in deciding whether or not to rezone. And here's a list of those. One of those, one consideration is public opposition in the opinions of local residents when it reflects logical and reasonable concerns. That can be considered. Number two, traffic, particularly increased traffic on limited roads or the increased risk of accidents. Thirdly, noise. Fourth, decreased value of adjoining land. Next, potential for criminal activity. Litter increase, increased strain or load on a sewage service. And then also a prohibition generally against spot zoning. A spot zoning is any circumstance where you zone one lot in a manner that's entirely different from its surrounding area. And it's it's a little more complicated than that. There are a lot of factors, but that essentially is what a spot zoning is, giving a special treatment to one piece of property that's just like everything around it, except you're wanting to zone this one differently. So you may hear references. Sometimes there's a reference to highest and best use. That's a general consideration. That's a term that sort of relates to its economic value of a piece of property. You may consider as a planning commission economic benefit, but you're not bound by that. Any rezoning is not justified solely on the ground that is necessary to put a particular tract at its most remunerative use. In other words, you're not bound to rezone property because it will make it more valuable. However, economic benefit is a consideration you can take along with other factors. So, you know, what are the consequences of not using appropriate factors? Well, any decision by the council ultimately legislatively is going to be supported as long as it's not arbitrary or capricious and and is consistent with due process. And so if you're considering the factors that we that I've discussed with you, you are being quite reasonable. You're not being arbitrary. You're not being capricious. You know, and I've said this before, and I think it probably goes without saying, but you don't, you know, make these decisions aren't made based on any personal animosity or retribution or general dislike or past history or or anything along those lines. Those things are not to be considered. And I would add this, another consideration is not the specific use that an applicant may have in mind. You have a request to rezone a piece of property to AC two in this case, or in general, any other zone. You have to look at all potential uses in that particular zone in make in looking at all these factors that I've given you. So Uh, in make, in looking at all these factors that I've given you, so. Um, I just want to give that to the commission as a reminder and just. For the benefit of everyone who may be speaking about. What would be very helpful information to have and what we can consider. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I wanted to give you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, Ms. Robertson?
Okay, um, this is the staff report for rezone twenty twenty three four eight five eight. Applicants the hole in the wall in WA LLC. And it's parcel number sixteen dash two four six eight eight dash zero zero two, or known as five eight one Chelsea Road. The applicant has applied to rezone the parcel. As stated, from this current single, uh, single family residential or R one to like. Commercial, which is C two zoning district with intent to allow for a mixed use outdoor community event center slash gathering place on the property. The subject property is east of a granite parcel highlighted in light purple there in the picture. Uh, to the left of the subject parcel highlighted in red. Other adjacent properties are within Bella Vista's owned residential or park slash conservation properties. This parcel has street furnished to Chelsea Road, which is a minor arterial road. Section one oh nine dash eight one provides that the C two district is intended to provide development of small to medium scale office, retail. And commercial developments and convenient areas with accessibility to major thoroughfares. Permitted uses include community center for recreation. It is inside city limits. And it's about eleven point nine seven acres currently zoned R ones surrounded by R ones and P ones. And then the grab it, which is outside city limits. Its current land use is low density residential and is surrounded by other low density residentials. And, um, grab it has that, uh, land use rated as agriculture. There's the future land use map showing low residential. All of by the master street plan. Um, you have Chelsea, which is the minor arterial road. And then you got Highland Road, which is a collector road. It's got a little bit of street friends too. And then the zoning map shows that it's current, currently zoned R one and then surrounded by the P one and R one zones. This is a comparison of the existing R one to requested C two uses within our code. Um, I won't read them all to you, but you can view them. The C stands for conditional use permit, while P stands for that is permitted by right. Legal notifications, um, staff published legal ad for July, on July twenty sixth and then the Arkansas Democratic Gazette. And then signage was placed for the public hearing on Monday, July twenty seventh. An applicant provided staff with all required certified mail notifications by or before Monday, July sixteenth. Staff's comments regarding utilities is that the POA water provided this law is not currently within its water service. Village wastewater provided this is on septic. And Centerton Water and Sewer District provided that this law is not within its service. And there are exhibits attached for further reference of this staff report. These are published, public comment received before the staff report was published. And here is the application submitted was also published. Legal description. And the letter addressed to the planning commissioner and city council members as a part of the application. It is also published. This is also a part of the applicant's submittal updated. This was just a petition that they had. Put out looking for support of their request. This is also published. And this is an overview of our R one code. Um, just wanted to compare the district purposes versus, uh, C two. This district is intended to create suitable environment for development of quality detached, single family dwelling dwellings with compatible densities. And related facilities normally required for a balanced and attractive residential area. Permitted uses within this district are single family dwellings and a limited number of other uses that may be used through conditional use permit. Versus the C two. Um, as stated, the very beginning of the staff report, it's intended for small to medium scale office retail. And commercial developments and convenient areas with accessibility and major thoroughfares. Permitted uses include, but are not limited to those permitted in C one. Single and family two housing district or housing and then community center. And a limited number of other uses may be allowed by conditional use permit. As we saw with the comparison chart I showed earlier. There's the current zoning map, subject parcel, it's right here. Up close. Parcel showing surrounding parcels. Here is the flood zone. And topography of the subject parcel. There's the FEMA flood plain map of Bella Vista. Subject parcel is down here. And then this is the. Zoning code for risk A, which is what, uh, the subject parcel is currently zoned as for their FEMA. Floodplain zone is floodplain A. This was published as well. Basically in zone A, um, the applicant must determine a base flood elevation prior to construction. Base flood elevation will be based on a source or method approved by local floodplain manager. And then here is the non-residential structure building area. Guidelines for zone A. Including commercial, industrial or other non-residential structures. Compared to residential structures above. This is a survey of the lot, the most recent one. Found in book ten fifteen, page four ninety. This is a little bit older one, as published and shown in two thousand and four. And then that brings me to the end of my staff report.
Okay, there any questions for staff from the planning commissioner? All right, I know that we do have the applicants online. Uh, is there anything that you'd like to add to the staff report?
Yes. My name is Beth Day.
You would, yeah, if you'd state your name for us, please.
My name is Beth Day. I'm one of the owners of the Hole in the Wall LLC. Um, I also own two lots in the neighborhood just above. The, the property that we're deciding on today or that you will be making a recommendation on today. And so just want to, um, take a few minutes to go over a little bit of background on the property. Um, there has been a lot of misconceptions about this property in particular. And so I wanted to address a few of those. Um, we purchased the property, um, a couple of years ago while it was still zoned. Um, while it was still a, a county property. Um, according to land title records and according to the city of Bella Vista. The property was, uh, county property, not city property. After we purchased the property based on our, um, good faith efforts to get all the information we could. The city informed us that this property had been annexed into the city of Bella Vista in two thousand and fifteen. And that they had not filed it with the county, which explains why we were not able to get any. Information on this annexation until after we purchased the property. And this was shortly before we had an opening event where we invited community members to come and give their input on the best use of the property. Um, at that time, when we were told that the property had been annexed, but had not been filed with the city. We were not informed that we had the right to, um, to appeal that annexation. And the thirty days, um, time period for appealing that annexation passed by without our being informed of that. This is the reason that we sued the city. And that lawsuit failed, um, very quickly. Um, and we have, um, since decided to, well, at one point, we decided to sell the property and the property is still on the market. Um, we bear no ill will towards the city or anyone else. We feel like they're all good people involved. Who are trying to make the best decisions for their community and for the city of Bella Vista. And so we just. Um, in a way, in a lot of ways, this felt like a comedy of errors. Um, and, uh, in a situation where better communication could have, uh, brought us to a much better conclusion. Um, that said, we decided to make one more effort to rezone the property. And we submitted the application and have received a lot of support from members of the Bella Vista community who actually have seen the property. And who have met us face to face and been able to ask us questions. Um, that is a, something that we hope we still will have the opportunity to do. Um, we, um, would like to be able to invite members of the community onto the property to take a tour. And see how beautiful this property is. Uh, there is a room like cave on the property that, um, we have found is a beautiful listening environment. For, um, for small musical groups. Um, the flat part of the property is in a floodplain. And we experienced the effects of that in the flood back in October that washed out the intersection at Chelsea and Highland. And, um, that was, uh, kind of a testament to us of not only the force of nature, but the fact that this property. Will not lend itself to very many uses except for leaving it as a natural, in its natural state as much as possible. The development of residential property on that, on, on that parcel. Would be almost impossible on the flat part of the parcel. However, it does lend itself to many of the uses that we have dreamed up and suggested and, um, received as suggestions from members of the community. And some of those, um, proposed uses, in addition to events like weddings, family reunions, um, art festivals, yoga retreats. We've had suggestions of movie nights in the cave, um, creation of butterfly gardens and other conservation efforts on the property. Um, the scouts have used it for many years, actually, um, the previous owners who are also now. Um, partners of the Hole in the Wall LLC, Julie Duncan and Dwayne Patterson. Um, have allowed the scouts to come onto the property for several years. And to not only camp on the property, but, um, provide, provide service and cleaning it up in return. Um, it's, um, it's just a beautiful place and it's, it's a beautiful gathering place. In the middle of the property, there's a large tree that we call the welcoming tree. And, um, in every sense, our intent has been to make this property something that is not just closed off. Um, for the enjoyment of one private resident, but it's something that can be shared and enjoyed by the community. Um, we, I received, because I, because I own one of the parcels right next to the property, I did receive an anonymous letter. Um, I'm assuming it was authored by one of our neighbors who I have spoken with previously, um, with Mayor Christie. And, um, because some of the, the complaints are similar. And I wish to address some of these con, these concerns, um, just right now. Uh, because they will come up and I want you to know that we've been thinking about it and we consider it, um, important to. Address the conservance of our neighbors and be good neighbors. So some of the concerns that came up in this list, the first was noise. And I wish to say a big, I'm sorry. We held an event which we hoped would be an opportunity to connect with members of our community. And we hired, um, a live musician, just a guitarist and a singer to come and sing. Um, to the members of our community. And they were amplified and the, the speakers were turned in a direction that it did reach some of our neighbors. The music ended at nine o'clock outside, um, but we continued the music inside the cave with a single musician.
Did we lose her?
Lost her, didn't we?
Yeah, she's not on here now.
Do we have any, anybody else with the ownership group that wants to keep going? While we wait for Miss Day to get logged back in? Let's give her, let's give her a minute or so to get logged back in.
She's logging back in right now.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, I lost my connection. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, I'll continue. Um, so we have learned a lot going through this process. And one of the things we learned is how sound carries across the valley, even to people who are not our direct neighbors. And so, um, there are a lot of things that we can do to mitigate noise. And I think that that's one of the, um, the things that we hope for is to be able to work with the city. In mitigation of any effects of the use of this land that might be, um, unpleasing to our neighbors. Um, one of those is definitely noise. Um, you know, I, I have some neighbors who just held a fifty. Fiftieth birthday party in my neighborhood this weekend and I heard their live band. And it was something that, you know, even in a residential area, um, it's, it's possible to have noise from time to time. So, um, just want to bring out that, bring up that we are willing to work with the city and with, um, local residents. On any mitigation needs that would come up, um, including possibly keeping music inside the cave, um, for more intimate listening experiences. Um, rather than out in the open. Um, safety was brought up as a factor, um, both from the fact that flash floods have occurred on the property as we spoke to before. And, um, another, and again, um, there's not a lot we can do except for not building. A lot of big permanent structures that can be damaged by those, those floods. But in any case, um, the, that's going to be a risk whether or not this is R one or C two. Um, it really doesn't, um, change the fact that, that flash floods will happen on that property. Wildfire, unfortunately, not all campers are. And. Fires can happen, especially when camping is, um, happening on a property. We agree wholeheartedly that that's an issue. And I think that brings up a bigger issue that needs to be in the city and within the POA. Um, requested access to the water at Chelsea and we have been denied. They, you know, had access to. It does not have access to water because it's not part of the, and so this be. The whole problem that I should be addressed at the. And flood mitigation as far as that's concerned. So I. Be, um, a point of discussion. Um, we also, safety is concerned. At. grade is have not had on property have purchased. He hopes to develop as a character such that there could be onsite management of the property. Another point I just want to. Are still concerned whether it's zone. Or C two can be buy, visit or develop. Proper modernization of the property can. Potential issue. Money, water, fire suppression. Thing, security issue, none of these improvements are likely if the potential. But the property will be, will still and can still be used for, um, some of these potential dangers. Um, you know, even being a haven to vagrants, this, this cave was a haven. Before we possession of the property, um, there have been. In and out of the cave for decades using it, um, because there wasn't proper. And so by mom as a business, um, because we have a financial interest in the property and because. And because we want to see it safe and not secure any losses ourselves. Um, we would ob, obviously make that a part of our business plan to make sure that that property stayed secure and that we made it a safe place. Um, parking was an issue. Um, oh, let me go back. Sanitation was an issue. Um, the fact that there are no potable water or septic systems on the property. And this idea was brought up that there was a long line of porta potties at our, um, first event. Um, in fact, there were just three. And we had them on an interior part of the property that was not visible to the street. Um, and we acknowledge again that this property would need to be developed with proper sanitation. And that's something that with investment, we would be able to do. Um, parking during the cave event, there was limited property on the parking, says this letter. Um, and in fact, there wasn't limited parking. Um, we were not sure what we ought to do, and so we allowed parking out on the street and on the inside as well. Um, for most events, the interior part of the property inside the fence would be sufficient for um, plenty of parking. Um, that said, um, Chelsea Road has a very, very wide uh, section of grass. That accommodated cars safely without any impediment to Chelsea Road. Um, so that was something that didn't, um, you know, we worked with the city on that to make sure that we were doing it properly. And um, there was no, no impediment to problem there. Um, finally, alcohol consumption. Um, they worry about, because in our letter, we stated the, the words share a beer around a campfire. Um, for some people, sharing a beer is a part of American life, is something that's highly acceptable and can be done without intoxication. Um, that said, we acknowledge the concerns of people who don't want a bar or a tavern close to residential neighborhoods. And we are committed to working with the city and accepting any mitigation that they suggest. Um, to make this again, a safe and orderly place for our neighbors. Um, most of all, we want to be a, this, to be a place that's family friendly. We want it to be a place that's safe for children and that where families are encouraged to come and bring their children um, and enjoy the property. So um, that said, um, just the last concern that was brought up was the fact that a C2 zoning could in the future be used. Um, for other uses, other than the intended uses that are stated. We understand that concern. Um, as in any rezoning, um, we can't foretell the future. We can't foresee whether or not um, someone could use this property as a gas station or a recycling facility or anything like that. Um, so this is some, something where we, we really do um, have to trust other human beings from time to time. And this is an area where we ask um, for communication and trust with the city and with the local residents. Um, the final thing I'd like to say is that this last weekend, I did go door knocking um, to our direct neighbors, people who are. Um, directly adjacent to people who would have been notified via certified mail about the rezoning request. And all the people that I talked to did not have any direct opposition to this rezoning. It seems to us that the main opposition is coming from people who are not our direct neighbors. Um, but who, um, and many of whom who live far away and not even close to this, this piece of property. Um, this piece of property is on the outer earth, out, the outer outskirts of Bella Vista. Um, Bel, Gravit is right on our, on our opposite side. And so as far as, you know, being removed from um, densely residential areas. Um, we are about as far as we can get. And so um, again, there is minimal impact, we believe, um, to developing this property. So that's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. This is JB.
Hi.
Um, I guess I wonder a, after listening to all of this and looking at the uh, different zoning things, I wondered. It's, it seems more applicable to a P1 rather than commercial. Is there a particular reason you chose commercial rather than, to me, it, nature center, park, that sort of thing?
Right. I think the biggest part was that in the beginning, we had hoped to be able to run this as a business. And in order to run a business, you do need to make, make money. And so, um, you know, originally, we were hoping for um, that ability. That said, as we have gone through this process and it's been mainly an uphill battle, we are open to suggestion. And we are open to the highest and best use of this land and developing it in a way that is not only highest and best use. But that is mutually beneficial for both the city and our neighbors and for us. At this point, we just don't want to lose money anymore. We want to do what's right um, for this land. And if that means developing it as a park and turning into a nonprofit, that's something we're open to. I think that we've all grown through this experience. Um, the members of this business are not business people by. Um, by birth or by trade. We're all, um, we all have our day jobs. Um, we all, you know, had dreams and hopes of developing this into something kind of funny, fun and exciting. Um, but through this, we've been humbled um, and have learned a lot about business development. And at this point, um, we're open to suggestion as far as a completely different. Um, look and feel to what our original plan was. And so um, you know, with that, with that, with those hard knocks, come openness and humility, we hope um, in taking suggestions. And, and to be honest with you again, um, bit of, just, we didn't know. Um, that P1, P1 was an option and we don't, we still don't know. How we could um, do that and still maintain um, the ability to develop the land and have it make sense monetarily for us. Um, we don't have unending stores of wealth over here. Um, we, um, like again, we are individuals. So um, so we would really welcome the input of the city and other business leaders. In developing this piece of land um, in a way that would be consistent with the needs of the community and preserve it. It's very, very beautiful and it's again, something that we really hope that we can share rather than just keeping it behind a gate that says private property. No trespassing. So, so the answer to your question is yes, we would consider that. And we just, uh, when we made the application to the city, we really hadn't thought about that at the moment, but we are now.
Thank you.
I have a question at this chat. Um, you touched it briefly, but what is your, if you're going to have all these people here, what is your sanitation plan?
Our original plan, we worked with Eco Design Group and um, our original plan um, was first, we were going to have to dig a commercial well. Um, and you know, we did, we need to raise the money to do that. Um, as far as sanitation is concerned, we were looking at the possibilities as, at some alternative methods of sanitation. Um, one of our members is here on the call. Um, Steve O'Tan has been in um, the business of wastewater treatment. And um, actually is quite, he's the expert in this group, not me. Um, Steve, are you on the call that maybe you could hop on and answer this question a little bit better than I could?
Yeah, the, the original use um, was for, for camping. So we were going to look at, um, we, we talked with the county. Um, and a, at the time, we were, we, we thought we were in the county, but we were looking at septic systems primarily. And then some onsite water uh, or wastewater treatment systems. Did that answer your question, Chad?
Well, you're looking at those, but so is that your plan going forward then?
For, for rezoning? Yeah, for, for septic, yeah. We would, we would look at a septic system if it passed PERC test. Um, but if it was, depending on what the use would be. Um, we would probably look more at a robust onsite wastewater treatment system, something that would have. Um, uh, an NPDS per, permit. Um, but again, this would, would go through engineering. If there was no, if there's no sewer system, public sewer system available.
Hey, I was just concerned that I didn't, there could be just porta potties lined up everywhere. That was my concern.
Gotcha.
Um, that, that is, was never the plan. We used porta potty, potties in that in, initial event simply because, you know, we hadn't gotten that far in our process. Uh, but that's not the long-term goal.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing I would like to say too is that um, should this be um, recommended to the city council for a vote? That would give us some more time um, to invite all of you, including those of you on the call who are members of the community. You don't have to be on the city council to take this invitation, but we'd like to make an invitation to all of you to come out to the property and come see it. I think it makes a big difference once. Um, it. Kind of your, your opinions and how you feel about how this property ought to be used. So, so after this meeting, we'd love to, you know, anybody who'd like to get in contact with me. Um, you can contact me through Facebook or through our Facebook page, the Hole in the Wall NWA LLC. And we'll make some announcements there as, as to a, a time when we can set up to do a, a tour of the property. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Chaka, I'm gonna do, I got a question. I'm gonna be kind of straightforward with my question. In, in your mind, how would you think this application will not be looked at as spot zoning?
That's a good question. Um, it is, it would be spot zoning in the, in the essence that there aren't any um, commercial properties around it. That said, there is another property in Bella Vista that is, that is similarly spot zoned. The Bella Vista Inn, um, which is also on, on the west side of Bella Vista is Zone C2. And it is completely surrounded by residential properties. Um, that, so for that reason, we understand that it needs to be kept low impact. Um, and again, we're willing to work with the city to mitigate any, any potential impact on our neighbors. Um, so, so we understand that that's a concern. And um, again, we are on the, it, on the very western border of Bella Vista. Um, bordered by farmland to the west of us and really, um, the actual neighbors that we have are very few. There are about four, no, five or six actual. Houses that have been built within um, the notification zone of two hundred feet outside the property.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioner for the applicant? Alright, seeing now we'll go ahead and uh, move to our public hearing portion of the uh, of the meeting. I do want to add that um. Staff did compile all the emails that have been sent in to the city. Uh, it has, had, I have uh, distributed those to the planning commission members. Uh, also, we have received several uh, emails directly from the public uh, to the different planning commissioners. Um, so as part of the rules for our public hearing process, uh, if you do wish to address the planning commission, we do ask that you uh, raise your hand virtually. Uh, uh, on the Zoom meeting or press star nine on your phone. Uh, we do ask that you state your name and your address and you will be limited to three minutes to address the planning commission. Um, and we do want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. We do ask that um, if uh. If, if the same item are being said over and over and over, try to stick to uh, new items or new points that need to be made. Instead of uh, rehashing uh, the same thing over and over. And so with that, we will go ahead and open the uh, the public meeting. And I see that Linda Largent has raised her hand.
Okay, Linda, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Lard, can you, can you hear us? Yeah, we can't, I'm not, we're not hearing her. Go, let's go ahead and move on to the next person who's got their hand raised. Uh, Jane Powell.
Yes, sir. I live at uh, thirteen Tillingham Lane. And my family and I are opposed to the rezoning from R1 to C2. According to the map inside the package, our home of over ten years is about four hundred feet from the nearest property line and about eight hundred feet from the cave stage area. And I'm sorry, but that's just enough of a, a concern for us for all that's going on to, to change this property to a commercial property. Um, the rezoning request marked the following uses, a club, a park, a campground, food sales, liquor and lodging. Some of our concerns are the noise. At their cave party, we could hear it clearly. And we could hear it with our windows and doors closed. And the safety of the flooding issue. There have been flush, flash floods and the last time, if there were campers there, especially small children. Then they could have been really hurt and the property damage could have occurred. And unless flash flooding does occur, but if nobody's on the property, then there's not a chance of somebody being hurt badly or even killed. There is a chance of wildfire. If you don't have any prop, water on the property. Then if a wildfire gets started, our home could be in danger. We don't really want to rebuild. There is no onsite management. Campers can't, if they don't clean up, who's going to come along and clean up illegal, illegal drugs and underage drinking? What about underage campground, campers? I do know that it probably has been a haven for vagrants, but if you open it up with porta potties and everything else, then you're probably going to get even more, especially this day and age. Sanitation, there is no POA water available. And I doubt if they're going to make that available. Uh, if you want to have food sales, you've got to have some kind of water and you've got to have some kind of septic system. And septics are very expensive. Uh, in the past, yes, they did have the blue porta potties. If those porta potties had been on the property when that flooded, it occurred. Then they would have washed down the street and maybe into Lake Windsor. That's not a good sanitation situation. Traffic, when it, when it occurs at the cave party, then yes, they are parking up and down the street. But when everybody leaves, when everybody comes, you're blocking our way to get up to our home. That is a concern. Liquor, we don't want an onsite liquor sales because there are children around in the neighborhood. We just don't want this in our neighborhood. And BYOB, come on, one beer, yeah. Um, I'm sorry, but that's just usually not the case. Nobody there on the property, there's nobody there to cons, uh. Ensure that drinking does not get out of control. Future owners, if this is a C2 and this adventure does not pan out, they said they weren't good business. Uh, developers, they're not good business people. So if they leave, this property could become a recycling center, a vehicle storage tavern, surplus, RV storage, pawn shop, laundry. Equipment rental or repair, a lot of things, please.
Ms. Powell, your time is up.
Okay, please don't destroy our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I see uh, Mr. Wilms is next on the list.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you state your name and address, please.
Larry Wilms, 109 Mayfair Drive. Uh, just some observations about the property for the commissioners and for the others involved. The property has had some recent land sales, one in August of two thousand fifteen. I think that was the time it was in the county yet and also in February of sixteen, I believe that was still in the county at that time or. Shortly after annexed to the city by default. When they disposed island, land was an island when they realigned boundaries between Gravit and Centerton and Bella Vista. In two thousand eighteen, July, the current owners took ownership. And the, the, the neighborhood has experienced some uh, unfavorable uh, items since that time. But when you look at the permitted uses under C2 zoning, campgrounds are not permitted. Uh, some other commercial type uses uh, are allowed. And any of the uses proposed by the applicant should zoning be granted. Uh, would require a planning commission review of their site plan and development. No development could occur in the floodplain area that would be other than a passive use. Passive use being like a drive, maybe a parking area, uh, playgrounds, um, obviously when unflooded conditions existed. So i, it would seem that the use uh, uh, as pointed out by, I think the uh, attorney for the applicant. There is an island which is the Bella Vista Inn on uh. Oh, I think that's on Chelsea on the east side of the lake. So uh, a similar situation where you have C2 in a residential neighborhood. The reality being is that if the city had not annexed the land, it would remain in the county. And the county really has no zoning stipulations for. And the county really has no zoning stipulations for usage. So the property owners would have been subject to perhaps any use, even some more severe than perhaps what is being currently proposed by the applicant. I'm not for or against the rezoning. That's a decision for the planning commission to make. Just pointing out some of the issues of the 12 comments that I've seen email wise, they've come in relative recent. But the petition that the applicant provided had 42 signatures, 31 of them living and indicating living in Bella, owning property in Bella Vista, 29 of them indicating they live in Bella Vista, and 12 of them indicating they use the trails, bike trails, walking trails, whatever, which I thought was interesting. So that said, I will turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilm. Next up, I see Michelle Hood. Ms. Hood, you will have to unmute your microphone for us to hear you.
This is Michelle Hood, 105 Northwest Erica Court. A lot that goes along the property line of the proposed parcel on Leona Drive with full intentions of developing a home on that lot in the future. I am concerned with this proposal by the property owners because listening to her discuss this land use, there seems to be no plan, no business plan, no solid plan for the actual use of this land. And having been on planning boards in other cities myself, that's just concerning because it doesn't, like, they have a fully vested interest in owning and running their business. And with no, doesn't sound like they want to work this business full time. It doesn't sound like they want to be on the land owning this business. And so I would encourage that this land be utilized for someone who can be responsible for this property.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I see Kyler Skates.
Can you hear me all right?
Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me all right?
Sure, we can. If you go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, this is Kyler Skates, 28 Tudor Lane. Live about two miles away from the said property. I just wanted to say I'm in favor of the rezone. I've been able to utilize that property with my Boy Scouts, who've been able to go down there and really enjoy that piece of nature and be able to eat in the cave and sleep in the cave and just be able to enjoy that. And it seems like it'd be a great opportunity for others to enjoy it as well. And when I went and participated in the opening, I guess it was the opening ceremony or grand opening or their little invite they had, they had a nice charrette there, and they talked about their plan. They showed some plans of what they intended to do with the property. And I thought their plans were great. You know, maybe through this discussion we've currently had, those plans haven't clearly come out. But to me, there was a plan in place and great opportunities for that property, especially with the trails going around there, with the lake so close. It's just an opportunity for us here in Bella Vista to enjoy something else and not have to go too far away to enjoy it. So in my opinion, I'm for, I would be, that would go down there and participate. I love to run down there all the time, so we go by there on a day. Would be able to enjoy that piece of the property if they were to be able to rezone it and put on there what they would like. So I'm all for it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skate. I see next up, we have a Jay Wees.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, if you state your name and address.
My name is Julie Wees. I live on 108 Buckingham Drive. We own this, our lot that we live on, and another lot in Bella Vista, too. We've been here 16 years. I want to say that I am absolutely for the rezoning. These people own this property. They purchased it in good faith, thinking it was from the county. And that was a big mix up. Most of the things that people keep bringing up are things that Beth already addressed, having someone on the property, having a septic put in. I mean, not sewer, septic put in. This is a beautiful property for kids. The Boy Scouts have been out there. The Girl Scouts have been invited out there. Homeschool groups have been out there. They are good people, and they want to do something good for Bella Vista and the people in Bella Vista. And I am, I for one, am ashamed of the way that this has gone down for them. But I just want to go on record that I am absolutely for this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I see a Wes Davis.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, if you give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Wes Davis, and I live at 22 Tillingham Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank the committee for allowing us to come in and speak. Again, I think this is a touchy subject for all involved. As for the last person that just talked, hey, I understand the fact of what these people have gone through. I'm not questioning whether or not they're good or bad either way. But I can tell you, when I talk to all the people who, all of the neighbors, that maybe it's somebody on the other side of the street. Because I can tell you, whenever you're talking about the hole in the wall, the hole in the wall is exactly what they say it is. It is a, I mean, I don't know if you want to, if you call it a cave, it's just a hole in the side of, inside of a rock. We were the ones on the other side of it pushed up to our houses. Ever come down our street knocking on our door, that's never happened over here. Right, so we have in and out of there. We have the lake that's about a quarter of a mile right down the road that has ramp. It's right there, for area. Again, I've had the police come, you know, patrol around the local area. They stop and talk to us. And the more that I've talked to the local police, they talk of the area due to the lack of schools, that they're able to actually live in, schools easier from, without having to go to schools and such like that. And so it turns to us bringing in a campground into a residential neighborhood. On just anyone who comes in or out, whether it be Bella Vista residents. And again, when you look at these type of amenities, amenities that are offered away, that people have to buy cards for to use, you know, whether it be golf courses or lakes or any of that type of stuff. Now we're wanting to put a for-profit campground in the middle of a residential area. And I'll tell you, when you're talking about, you know, this group here who's wanting to benefit financially from this, I get it. I'm a business guy myself, I get it. But I can also say, all of us on the other side bought homes for that same reason. But we don't need a campground that could put value of our homes also. Again, I've got multiple lots here in Bella Vista. So I'm speaking out from that aspect of it also. I hate the situation that happened to them, to where they feel like they could potentially lose money on this. But I understand. But also, the rest of us residents who live across the street don't want to lose money on our end of it either.
All right, thanks, Mr. Davis. Is there anybody else that would like to address the planning commission? You'll need to. I see no other hands raised. We'll go ahead and close our public hearing meeting and take it back to the planning commission. Commissioners? It's to you.
Well, I'll go first, I guess.
Yes, sir, Mr. Forener.
Okay. Any way you look at what is being asked to happen, that becomes spot zoning, which is something we really need to stay away from. If anybody has written out to that property, they realize, they'll have to realize that it is in the middle of residential. It's very isolated. And the chances of any other type of property or type of business that's allowed under C2 going in there is slim and none. I can't see anybody putting offices of any kind out there. It's too isolated. That being said, I think we need to leave it like it is because spot zoning is not a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Forener.
This is JB. Could I make a statement, please?
Absolutely.
I guess I'd like to ask, I don't need an answer. I'm just asking a rhetorical question. How many of you commissioners have actually gone out and looked at the property for yourself? And the reason I'm asking that is, I think in all fairness, we owe it to look at both sides. I've been there and looked at it, and I was totally, there were things I learned about the whole thing that were just a total surprise to me. I almost challenge you to go and take a look at it. I'm not sure we have enough information to make any sort of recommendation on this. And my concern is, like I said earlier, I am not sure that commercial is the right zoning. And that's just me. And I think there's a lot more to investigate. If you made it more of a park or a nature center, I know that. But I'm not sure myself I'm ready to make a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Forener.
I will say that I went out there and looked at that property, and I was surprised that anybody would want to develop anything in the floodplain part of that. I can't see septic. I can't see any kind of commercial business that requires any kind of building being put there. And I would agree with you that it's possible that a different classification might be better. But we are faced with the decision of changing it from R1 to C2. And so I don't, I mean, I don't think the discussion of whether it should be parkland or anything is really appropriate to this.
I think, first of all, just to correct what I think you said, Mr. Forener, we, as a planning commission, are not changing the zoning on this. We're making a recommendation to.
Oh, I understand that, I understand.
Yeah, to the city council on the, on what has been presented to us by the applicant and by staff. So the applicant has requested us to change this to C2, and we are going to vote on a recommendation to either approve or deny to the city council.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Chalky Almadun, may I make a comment? The, you know, I don't have, you know, I mean, contrary to common belief, you can build a floodplain, if you have enough money, you can build anything you want in a floodplain. Okay? It's been done, it's not something that keeps anybody from building if you follow the rules and do it correctly. So my concern with this is, it's a question I asked the applicant, it's a spot zoning. As far as I'm concerned, there is nothing around to lend, to support zoning that's compatible with the region, the area. I don't believe it's fair to the residences in the area who purchase their property to come now and say, well, we're going to put the commercial behind you. I mean, it's not, it's spot zoning, it's a classic spot zoning, in my opinion. So I will not be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Almadun. Hey, this is Chad.
I have a problem with it. I think it's too intense. There's no buffering, going from R1 all the way to C2. I think that's too intense, and I'm concerned about what else may come in there under that type of zoning. So I too do not favor this. I would like to see it approached from a P1 standpoint, like Ms. Portello has suggested.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Knoll?
Yeah, I had two issues. First, what are we going to allow in there? There's no real plan. And of all the emails that I've received, it's like 15 to one against it. And I am concerned with noise from the neighbors. If I had a house in the area, I would be concerned for that, too. So I would encourage everybody that, I don't think we could recommend this to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Knoll. I, it's an interesting idea that's being presented to the planning commission. I have a little bit different take on spot zoning, reading planning books and current newer planning books that are out there. It talks about creating commercial nodes to try to limit impact on infrastructure and things like that. But I'm not sure what a commercial looks like in Bella Vista, because Bella Vista is very unique. I'll look at this one, and, you know, you have to look at the whole list of what can be put there.
Yeah.
I think if an applicant wanted to come in with a very specific plan and want to do it under a PUD, where there's some definite ties to a specific intended use, I think that's a difference than coming in and just asking for a blanket zone that could allow for liquor stores or whatever else was on the list. I can't remember anything that was on the list. But it's always difficult for me to rezon something to commercial and just know that, all right, we've now opened it up to anything, anything that is allowed by law in a commercial zone. And it may not fit for the residents that are in that area. And it may not be something that would be considered neighborhood services or whatever that would benefit the neighborhood. Any other comments? Ms. Forener, go ahead.
Are you ready for a motion at this point?
I would, I would, I think that I, we are required, or we should, Mr. Kelly may have to weigh in, but I do believe we have to give the applicant a brief moment to, you know, address any comments or questions that have come up. We would ask that she keep it short and to the point. But I do think we need to give her an opportunity to kind of make one last, address the comments that have been made.
You certainly can do that, that's typical to.
Well, I think typically we've done that, so.
Thank you.
We'll give you a couple minutes to wrap up your presentation.
Great, thank you so much. As it stands, we are still members of the Bella Vista community, and we are committed to be, continue to be part of the Bella Vista community. And so, you know, we understand at this point that this is, you know, it's an uphill road for us to determine the best use of this land. We have felt deeply that there is something about this land that has a healing aspect to it, a positive aspect that can allow people to come and gather. And, you know, in a day of social distancing, when we can't go inside and gather, we actually have a place where people can gather outside in ways that are safe and ways that are, you know, healthy. And we believe that nature is extremely healing. To that end, we will continue to do our best to kind of follow the path that we felt, have felt called to follow, which is to bring this land to its highest and best use. We understand that C2 zoning may be a large jump and a stretch. And so we're going to go back to the drawing board if we need to, and it sounds like we might need to. And we hope sincerely that we can have the help of the planning commission and the city to make sure that this land can be shared. Just from the very beginning, we have tried to get input and tried to have conversations, and we will not stop trying to have conversations with our community. So we are your neighbors, and we're happy to be there. So thank you.
Thank you. I just, we did have a couple of comments on the chat asking if we can postpone this. Unless the applicant wishes us to table this, she can request that we table this. Otherwise, we will proceed if she is requested.
To the end, if there are any members of the planning commission who would like to come see the property first before they register their voice or their opinion, then yes, we would ask to table it until the planning commission members have had a chance to see the property. That, I guess that would require that, maybe by raising our hands, if you would like to come see the property first. That, I guess that would require that, maybe by raise of hands, if you would like to come see the property first or would be willing to come see the property.
I, I, I know we talked about it at the work session and I believe from what I've heard, most of the planning commissioners have been out to the, to your property. I know that I have.
Who, who was speaking at that point? Sorry, I couldn't quite tell.
The chairman.
Okay, I, I don't require, recall meeting you at the, at the opening event. Was it before?
Oh, no, I went out there, I went out there last week.
Okay, all right. Were you able to get on the property by yourself?
Yes.
We, we do have the property locked up. So I'm not sure how you, how you went in without calling us first because it is private property, but we would request that if anyone else wishes to actually visit the property that you call us first. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this. I think to help the applicant, I'm personally familiar with the property for ages from a long time ago. So I'm very familiar with it. I don't need to go and see it. The applicant is, I think, would be well advised to really come up with a really good plan that kind of addresses the comments that she heard or they heard. And, you know, from my perspective, you know, I mean, I still keep an open mind. If other options are laid out correctly and appropriately addresses everybody's concern, foremost is your neighbors, the neighborhood, these folks who bought and invested in their properties. I don't want to be the guy to surprise them in a bad way. So you have a lot of work to do if you want to table this. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I think at this time, I mean, we still have, this is still an item on our agenda that we've got to take a vote on unless the applicant specifically wants to request that we table it.
I do have a question. Can we, if a tabling in order to do more research on the P1 zoning is, is appropriate, we'd like to, just, I've, I've been reading some comments from our business partners here. Does requesting a P1 zoning require that we start the entire process again? Or might it be that in, in the interim, we could do some research on a P1 zoning?
I, let me, Chairman, say something here. I think we've had a public notice of a request to rezone to C2. It sounds a little like, and I'm not trying to, to put words in anyone's mouth, but it's sounding a little bit like possibly the applicant might want to withdraw their current application and make a new application and possibly try a different zone. And I, I think that would require the notification and, and an additional public hearing. I think that would be a little bit more than just tabling it. I think if you tabled it, you're gonna, and, and you're gonna come back and you're gonna have the same application in front of you. And we would have the problem of, of not having had a public hearing if they want to make a modification of that. So I'm a little concerned about making sure there's a public hearing on the, whatever the final request would be of the city.
That's a great suggestion, Mr. Kelly. And I, I think at this point, it's very clear the direction this is headed. And so if I might just take a moment to get a lay-in from the rest of my partners, is that okay? Just kind of 30 seconds to.
Sure, we'll give you, we'll give you a minute.
Thank you. Just messaging them here shortly. Okay, we've got a little bit of a split decision here. Give me just 30 more seconds.
Mr. Chairman, while they're commiserating, let me offer one thing. You, you mentioned a PUD and, you know, that really is the zoning area where you can get into use and combine that with and really get into the issues that it sounds like everyone's wanting to get into, rather than in your traditional strictly zoning considerations. So you can tailor a PUD or PCD, excuse me, to a property, you can alleviate all kinds of concerns, you can put all kinds of restrictions, you can, you have a lot more freedom in that context. And so both for the applicant and for all those who are opposed, if you want to start talking about what the exact plan is, really, it's only a PCD application is going to let you really do that. Otherwise, you're going to have a discussion.
One more question for you. If we were to allow the vote to proceed, would we have to then wait a year to resub? You know, let's say the vote is no. Would we need to wait a year to resubmit as a P1 or?
I would, I'm not advising you. I'm not your attorney. I would just tell the commission that if you, if the commission votes to recommend a denial, you can still go to the council and it's going to be up to the council. If they voted to recommend an approval, it's going to go to the council. So it's ultimately the council that's going to decide that and that would still proceed. Assuming you wanted to continue to proceed. If, so it's not, you know, once the council made a decision and rejected, then you would have these timeframes, you'd have to wait.
Okay. And that is, that is something that is a concern to us because obviously time is of the essence for us. It looks like we, based on that information, we have several members recommending withdrawal of the application at this time.
Sure, are you requesting to withdraw your application?
Yes.
All right, we have a request from the applicant to withdraw their application. Jason, do we need to take a vote on that or do we just accept that?
I think we can accept that. I, I think you, I think if you wanted to go ahead and vote on it, you probably could. I, I have to be honest with you. I have to do a little more in-depth review of the rules. I think if they're withdrawing their application on the record, that withdraws it and you can consider there's nothing for you to be deciding at this point. I think that would be.
This day, we will consider your, your application to rezone this property withdrawn and we look forward to hearing from you in the near future. Thank you. Unfinished business? To our open discussion? Do we have anything for open discussion?
I do not have anything. Doug, do you have anything that you needed to chime in with?
No, sir. Glad to be back.
We're glad to have, glad to have you back. Could you give us like the 15-second update on our favorite question? I, I know Mr. Almadun or Mr. Forener was about to ask you, so.
I wasn't going to.
I was.
I did get an email on that today. Let me pull it up here. Been out for a couple of weeks, so I'm going through hundreds, hundreds of emails. But I did see, is the mayor still on? Mayor, did John update you on their timeline start of why they didn't start on the 6th? Let me see if I can find that. Bear with me. I did see an email from John Sainsbury with Dr. Hull today. But I don't recall the specifics. I've read so many. I can certainly forward it to everyone, though, if you, if you want me to this evening.
We were just looking for an update because we knew last thing we'd heard that they're supposed to be getting going in a few weeks and it's been a, it's been more than a few weeks and just curious.
Yeah. I apologize. I did, I did see that email today, but I didn't. I don't recall the, the start date. He did, he did provide that date, though.
Okay, so we, we at least know a start date has been provided to city staff. That's progress.
That's my understanding. I'll forward this over to everyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tap. Is there anything else for open discussion? All right, seeing none. The city council work session will be on Monday, August 17th at 5:30 PM. Please be watching the city website for the agenda and how this meeting will be handled. City council regular meeting will be on Monday, August 24th at 6:30 PM. Planning commission, we will have a work session on Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. Is that correct, Mr. Lynn?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
All righty. And that will most likely be by Zoom. I, I don't see the governor changing that here anytime soon. And then our next planning commission meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 14th at 4:30 PM. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.